All right, we're going to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move on in our agenda to action items. The first action item is about filling the board vacancy. Ms. To.
Yes, I would like to make a motion under policy nine two two one to fill the vacancy of the board with Dr. Gaetan Francis.
And I'll go ahead and second that motion. Aaron, do you want to turn this down a little bit? Thank you. All right, so the board policy nine two two one says that any vacancy occurring on the board unless otherwise provided by charter or special act shall be filled by a vote of the remaining members of the board as soon as feasible until the next regular town election, which is in November. The vote will be recorded town charter requires that a vacancy be filled with a member of the same political party. Just process wise, the board met an executive session to discuss the vacancy last night. We cleared that with town council who said that we could do that under an exemption to FOIA. We held a discussion during that meeting and Ms. To was making a motion tonight, so I'll turn it over to you, Ms. To.
I'm just quickly to give you a little background, I think most of you know Gaetan, she served on, I was lucky enough to serve on the board with her. She was always a wonderful thoughtful engaged board member, very measured. I found her, she was chair of our policy committee for a time, she was the vice chair at one point. She was always willing to roll up her sleeves and get things done and always listen to both sides of any argument. I really always respected that. And I think you all know that we have a lot to do. We're meeting here the day after school is closed and we're going to be meeting throughout the summer. And then we will, of course, have a lot of work ahead of us in September, October and early November. So we thought it made sense to bring back a board member that could hit the ground running and is engaged and in the community. And the great thing about Gaetan is that she's always willing to help the community in any way that she can. So with that, I open it up to others.
All right, discussion. Ms. Downey.
I just want to say I feel grateful that anyone who's no longer on this board would be willing to come back on, even if it is for a short period of time, and particularly someone again who's thoughtful, knowledgeable, compassionate. I think a bonus that she's a physician as we have any kind of discussions about COVID. I think we're very lucky to then be able to operate as a full board until November.
Thank you. Anybody else? I served four years with Dr. Francis. She was a wonderful colleague, fantastic board member, was always prepared for meetings, asked very thoughtful questions. We didn't agree on everything, but we definitely were able to work together, collaborate and and help move things along. I've always appreciated the time I had with her, so I'm glad she's ready, willing and able to step back in. Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Chair.
Um, I like Gaetan. I enjoyed serving with her as, you know, I think everything has been said about Gaetan. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend the session last night, so I didn't participate in the discussion. So I'm just counting votes. I don't think my votes needed. I'm not going to be voting because I didn't participate in the discussion. I don't think it's appropriate for me to participate, vote on something I didn't participate in.
Ms. Kowalski.
Thanks. I, I don't know Dr. Francis. Both personally or professionally, I had a work conflict that Peter I had spoken to you earlier about. So I obviously appreciate anyone's willingness to, to join the board even for a short period of time. But I just feel compelled to the fact that I wasn't able to engage in the discussions and of this and have a further conversation with her in advance of tonight's meeting. I'm just going to abstain for those reasons.
Mr. Kelly.
She, she seemed great last night. I did attend the meeting. I don't know her at all. A little bit. I met her when she gave birth to my youngest child, but she only stepped into that role. She was calm, cool. She did well, but she was not the regular doctor she substituted for this. We didn't get to know her along the way. But she seems really nice. But I don't know her. If a board member is going to serve with me, the way I see it is they would be elected by the community and the community would make a decision to have that person serve on the board. I have nothing negative to say about her. I've only seen positive things about her. I hesitate or I'm probably not going to vote. I certainly won't vote against her. So she seems really good in that sense. But I can't take the responsibility of voting for her because I don't know her well enough. And even in last night's session, she seemed wonderful. She answered the questions tremendously, but I didn't work with her, so I can't take that responsibility. And like Mr. Shear, I don't think you're going to need my vote.
It's a majority vote for policy, majority vote. All right. Appreciate it now understood. And just so people know for those out there under state law, basically, we would have 30 days from the effective date of Meghan's resignation, which was last Thursday in order to appoint somebody. And if we fail to do so, the select would do that. It is always my preference for this board to make its own decisions rather than farming it out to others. So you know, it makes sense for us to have a full complement as we go forward. And I can't think of a better person to to serve out the remainder of the term than Dr. Francis. So with that, we're going to take a quick, quick roll call vote. And I actually have forgotten my I forgot my piece of paper. So I'm just going to go from the end down there, Ms. Kowalski.
You can't do the alphabet in your head because that's how you usually do it.
Try. No, officer, I can't recite the alphabet backwards. Ms. Kowalski.
For the reasons I stated, I'm abstaining.
Okay, Ms. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Could you come back to me?
Sure. Ms. To.
Yes.
Bernstein is a yes. Hirsch.
Yes.
Chair.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, and Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, I believe you don't need my vote, so without the need of my vote, I will abstain.
All right, with that, Dr. Francis, Michael, if you could elevate Dr. Francis on the Zoom. So here's the deal, we're going to swear you in right now because we want you to participate in this meeting. According to the town clerk as an attorney, I am eligible to swear you in. So just let me make sure I can see you on the Zoom. Give me one second. Would you mind turning your camera on? There you are. Oh, thank you. All right, all right, Dr. Francis, here we go. You ready?
Ready.
All right, do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut? So long as you continue as a citizen thereof and that you will faithfully discharge according to the law duty, the duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Town of Greenwich to the best of your abilities. So help you God.
I do.
All right, well, congratulations and welcome back. You're not getting another bell. And I don't know, I don't know if you wish to say anything before we move on.
Actually, you know, I did want to say a little something, which is I have been so proud of how the Greenwich schools did through this pandemic. It was something that I spoke to lots of people about, and I think you guys did a fantastic job, and I just wanted to compliment all of you on that.
Thank you very much. A lot of that is Dr. Jones, her team, and especially the teachers. They were amazing.
They were, this was directed to everybody, not giving that much credit to the board alone.
We're not taking it. Don't worry. All right, thank you. All right, so we are now at eight. Thank you very much. The, the next item on our agenda is an action item. It's the North Myana School Alternate Site Contract. Would somebody like to make the motion as it appears on the cover sheet? Ms. Downey? Sure, please.
And motion is that we, we, the Greenwich Board of Education approved the lease for an alternate site for the North Myana School to be located at nine twenty six Newfield Avenue in Stanford, Connecticut. And we give the superintendent authority to sign such lease.
Is there a second? All right, Ms. To, discussion, Dr. Jones.
First of all, I just want to, I don't want to forget to say thank you to Abby Wadler, who's the town attorney, has literally been working on this for weeks. And she did a fantastic job being able to negotiate and get the language where both parties would agree. We did not post the full contract online at the advice of legal and safety because within the contract, there are lots of maps and things that would put safety at risk. And so we were advised not to do that. The price is exactly what we said the lease would be when we went in front of the BET, which is seven hundred and sixty five thousand. It is, there are the two licenses that also go along behind the lease. There's a, for all of the parking and sidewalk area out front, which is one dollar. So it was, that was one dollar over. And we did also have a license agreement so that we have access to a large field softball field, baseball field huge out back. And that was also negotiated for a dollar. So we're really, really thrilled with the space. And I would like for those of you, if you're not in the North Myana community, you might not have seen a video we sent out to the family. We did send it to the board yesterday as well. And Michael is ready to, I think, play that for us just for, so the community can see that site. Yeah, it is a beautiful site. And just for clarity, the, the grades that were displaced this year were first grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and then our ALP classes had to go to Parkway. We are next year at this site, the alternate site will be third, fourth and fifth. So it's all of our upper grades together. And we are leaving K one and two at North Myana. So the early childhood is, is in their homeschool. So we're, we're working on packing up third grade right now to make that transition to the new site. And I think you probably saw some of the smart boards in there. Because in North Myana, we were due to refresh their smart boards. They may have brand new ones that are ours, but it's going to depend on what's happening with COVID and shipping. So there are some there now, but that are older, but we're hoping to have our new ones. Technology infrastructure is all there. They've upgraded all of that. We also have access, which I think it said on there too, the offices, nurse suite to make sure that we've got everything we need.
Just if I could ask about the IT, so wifi is steady and good.
As far as we know, yes, we haven't been in there to check it out, but it's all new because they're in a renovation upgrading process. That's why they're so thrilled to have us there.
Other discussion, Ms. Hirsch.
The one question I had is in regards to transportation and timing. Are we going to be looking to keep the hours of the school day the same? As I'm sure that there are probably parents who might have a child in K one, two, and a second or third child in three, four and five, and ensuring that a parent who does pickup is able to get to and from, or if we will be doing some kind of hub bus to get the third, fourth and fifth graders back to the homeschool for pickup. You know, if there's back to school nights and things like that, we need to sort of be considerate of making sure parents who have students in multiple sites have the opportunity to attend both. So I just wanted to make sure we thought about that in advance.
Absolutely. We still have some planning to do, but having two sites will be a piece of cake, I think, compared to what we were doing with, with the nine buses going to the other schools. Because we were going to OG Cos Cob and Parkway. So they will drop off at North Myana and then those buses will take them to the alternate site like we've done this year.
So I just wanted, are the hours going to be, remain the same for that?
As far as I know, the answer would be yes, but I will say even with our alternate sites this current year, the parents, for instance, at Parkway ask us to read, to get them on the buses sooner. So, you know, they started dismissing like the first people in the building because it was taking them so long to get from Parkway to there. So if we have, if we run into issues like that, we adjust with the bus company.
Having been at a school that was displaced, I, I know the, the pain that parents might feel. So as long as we include them in that conversation, that would be great.
Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. My question comes from a constituent. They had asked, did we, I know in your note, you had said that it's about 15 minutes away from North Myana School. The question was, was that time taken during the time when kids would be riding in a bus to that school? They said, they said, I'm sorry, they said that, that it might be a little longer or significantly longer because there's a lot of, a lot of traffic and issues there. I'm not familiar directly with that, but that's what they asked me to ask.
We have, but until we get back in the fall, traffic is so different this year. If you look at even how few kids are on our buses with COVID. So I mean, it could look a little different. The one caveat we do have is Angela Schmidt, the principal, literally lives like a stone's throw away. So she knows the fast route and exactly, and she's the one that helped us with timing.
Thank you. Ms. Downey.
My other questions have already been asked, but I just, how are you going to handle, I mean, you've been doing it this year specials. For example, you showed the art room in the, you know, are you, are you, we, is there a staffing change or what's going on with that?
As far as which staff will be at which site, they were already divided this year, really in many regards, but we'll have to look at how we can have it the easiest for staff where they're not running back and forth during the day. But as far as specials, yes, all the specials will be in place. It's going to be better, I think, than it is this year because it's been a little bit of a challenge where, you know, they were having music on the stage and like at Cos Cobb, the art teacher had to give out the art room in order to have a fourth grade class in there. So I think it's going to be better, much better.
How many classrooms is it?
It's 20 altogether because there aren't those additional spaces needed.
Other discussion? All right, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and take a roll call vote. So Dr. Francis. You're first. Can you unmute?
It was going to be difficult and ask to go last.
That's fine. And by the way, if during discussion you want to talk, just raise your hand and I'll, I'll try to keep an eye on it. All right, I'll start at this end, Mr. Chair. Oh, yes. Ms. Hirsch.
Yes.
Bernstein's a yes. Stowe.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes.
And Francis.
So I will abstain, given that I am just getting on the board and really haven't heard this story along the way.
Fair enough. All right. Thank you very much. I guess, Dr. Jones, we appreciate the work that everybody's done to Abby Wadler as well in terms of moving this forward. I know the families are anxious to know this. And obviously communicating with them over the summer will be key. So all right, we're going to move on to our discussion item and the reason we originally scheduled this meeting. So thank you for bearing with us. And we always have extra business. The special education audit. So I'm going to turn to our friends at the Public Consulting Group to kick this off. I think Matthew, we've got you.
Yes, we are here. Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the board administration. Very pleased to be here tonight. I'm joined by two of my colleagues, Dr. Jennifer Meller, as well as Matthew Scott. Jennifer and I will be going through the presentation this evening. And we look forward to answering the board's questions at the end of the presentation. So without further ado, we can get started onto the first slide. Tonight, we're going to go through our agenda of the project approach, the strengths and opportunities, the special education effectiveness domains and corresponding recommendations and questions from the board. Before we get started, what I would like to say is that we worked in conjunction with an appointed steering committee, as you know, to manage this engagement. The steering committee consisted of the superintendent, two boards of education members and two parent representatives. Two other GPS staff members appointed by the superintendent provided logistical support and assistance with gathering requested data and documents and adherence with GPS's request for an independent review. At no point in time did PCG share preliminary findings, analyze data or report drafts with GPS staff members, board members, steering committee members, or any others outside of those employed by Public Consulting Group. Next slide, please. So to sum it up, in, 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 in a neat and clean way, to PCG, a review is not just about identifying the challenges and offering recommendations. It's about creating an intentional, ambitious and urgent path forward for the Greenwich community to improve the outcomes of students with disabilities. So what I'd like to do now is go through the guiding questions. These can be found in the executive summary, which you have. The first, how is the district's continuum of services organized to support a free and appropriate education? FAP? And to what extent is GPS's meeting compliance and data collection requirements? Number two, how are funds budgeted and what are the major cost drivers? Does GPS allocate resources in a way that facilitates maximum return on district investment? Number three, to what extent does GPS organize and utilize its human capital resources to provide adequate services for students with disabilities to support and maximize student learning outcomes? Four, to what extent does GPS employ inclusive practices and implement instructional practices that focus on improving academic, functional and post-secondary outcomes for students with disabilities? And five, how does GPS support the unique learning needs of struggling students through its tiered system of support? And all of these were generated through the specifications that were identified in the RFP, which the district put out and which PCG was subsequently awarded in terms of the project. So how we approach this work? This is a data intensive exercise. There are really five core data methods that we leverage in terms of this review. One, we conducted a data and document review, and that was through documents that were submitted through the staff that I mentioned as part of that group. Two, focus groups and interviews, and there were many, many of them. Three, student file review focus groups. Four, classroom visits and five surveys. In terms of the work, we approached this work through five core phases. We kicked off in August and worked our way through to October in really visioning the project management process and kicking off and making sure that our contract was signed and ready to go. Phase two is really where the shovel comes out, where the communication and work plan is finalized, where we identified our focus review questions and goals. And we developed and improved our data instruments with the, with the committee, the steering committee. Three, and that was October through December. We did a lot of, of data, data, data. So that was focus groups and interviews among other data collection activities. Four, we developed a report that was, was one that is certainly not a short one. And it will be shared out at the conclusion of this meeting. And that brings us to June. And phase five is the action planning phase, really to, to actualize the recommendations that we present to you this evening. Now I'll turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Miller.
Good evening, everyone. As we get into the findings of the report, I wanted to orient you to what we call the effectiveness domains. When we do this kind of work around the country in various states, we look to six key areas and specific indicators in each one of these areas. And these indicators really are for us that report card, if you will, or the, the detail behind ensuring that you are positioned to have an effective, high-quality special education program. So as we will talk about tonight, we looked at human capital and what that means to us is investing in people from recruitment to retirement. We took a deep look at expectations, to what extent, not just in Greenwich, but we've seen other places that expectations are high and their students are well-supported and we're assuming that they are competent and that they can access material if we give them the right supports. Systems and structures, there has to be an operational piece behind all effective instruction. So allocating resources, looking at data, using systems to guide some of that decision-making. Family and community engagement, that is a critical one. And that really involves, involved a great deal in this report about coordinating with families and community organizations in terms of building trusting partnerships. The learning environment and specialized services, we're going to spend a great deal of time tonight talking about that area. That is the real key to what special education looks like from an instructional perspective. And that it is through an inclusionary framework, there's IP fidelity. And I will add, that's where we also look at MTSS or multi-tiered system of supports for students who might be struggling with accessing learning. And then finally, leadership, those partnerships at the school level to the central office, to all levels of the organization, how they work in concert to be supporting students with disabilities. So you will see at the end that our recommendations are geared into each of these areas. And I think you can clearly see where there are areas that we recommend more improvements than others, I'll say. And so we'll get into that a little bit more detail. This framework was designed, it's okay, Matt, you can keep it there, was designed to be bound by research as well as our experience. So we, we came to these indicators or areas based on current literature as well as our experience doing this work. So we're going to dig into the strengths and opportunities for improvement. We will follow generally the executive summary, which I know that you have seen and has posted. As we get into this, I wanted to highlight something Matt said, which was the broad representation we have from stakeholders. We had over 350 people participate in our focus groups. About 90 participate in our student file review focus groups, which is a whole other set. And then we had, we observed almost 30, I'm sorry, visited almost 30 classrooms. So saw a lot of support going on there. And then the two surveys, so with great representation and participation in those surveys. So the, what we came to represents a very wide swath of opinions and perspectives on where things stand within Greenwich. So let's start first with a district context and demographics. This should probably be no surprise to you that we recognize that you are a high-performing district, have high qual, are known for high-quality schools and programs. And that there's organizational support, both at the board level and certainly in district leadership at this point to making a special education, one of those high-quality programs by implementing the recommendations we'll talk about tonight. Also of note is that within the results-driven accountability, which is the federal framework that comes with special education and balances both compliance as well as outcomes for students with disabilities that Greenwich received a meet requirements indication from the Connecticut Department of Education. There are a lot of indicators that states are, sorry, LIA's districts must meet. So this is commendable that Greenwich has met all of those and continues to uphold those standards. In terms of overall opportunity, opportunities for improvement, we recognize, and this has been a conversation among many, many groups over the course of our data collection, that there have been many reviews. There have been four or five reviews in the past 27, almost 20 years. And that there are, what we identified are some similarities, commonalities between all of those reports. The focus on the IEP or the PPT process in terms of inconsistencies and at times that it's hard for parents to access this and understanding the jargon and what's happening within that process. So that was identified through all of the reports. Communications and engagement, stakeholder involvement in a positive way. is an area that is continued to be identified, and we'll talk about more tonight. The continuum of services, and by that I mean the way that special education services are delivered and how they're organized and how they're supported. There was inconsistency between them and opportunities, as all these reports identified, to go deeper into ensuring that students with IEPs are served in an environment that best suits them. And as well as professional development, that was another area of ways that differentiated learning can happen for the adults in schools and that there needs to be a better plan to continue to do that. In terms of identification practices, what stood out to us and the demographic data that we looked at, and I'm going to read this to make sure that I get my numbers right here. Hispanic students were four times more likely to be identified with an intellectual disability and two times more likely to be identified with a speech and language impairment. And what that means is they're at a higher risk for being identified for each of those specific disabilities. They're more likely to be identified than some of their peers. And that Black or African-American students were twice as likely to be identified with either having an emotional disability, a health impairment, or a specific learning disability. And the last part I'll highlight here is that of the students with an IEP, 32.4% were economically disadvantaged or receiving free or reduced lunch compared to 19% of students without an IEP. So those are some of the key areas. As you will see when the full report is released, there is a substantial amount of additional data that are in there and trends analyzed over time. But these were the ones that stood out to us in terms of a laser focus that needs to be placed on it. So when it comes to special education services, I first want to highlight what came out very clearly in our focus groups. It came out clearly in our surveys is that there are committed educators dedicated to supporting students with IEPs. These are not just special education teachers, these are not just parent educators. This was across the board that there is a commitment and a will to want to support students with IEPs. The pre-K performance data or outcomes, as identified by the state performance plan, which I mentioned earlier, the determination, shows sustained and positive outcomes. Of the districts that we work with across United States, it is very rare for a district to have met requirements in all six of the subcategories under pre-K performance. So that is certainly commendable that that is occurring. Progress reporting. Progress reports are required as part of an IEP. I think what we saw across the board and what we heard is that your staff are putting quantifiable data into those reports to make it easier to demonstrate to parents what progress was made or perhaps not made, especially during this complicated year. But that there are actual data that's collected and that's supported to make those indications of progress towards an IEP goal. And finally, this dovetails on the previous one about, the first one about the educator commitment, is that there is a common shared set of beliefs among teachers that students with disabilities are their students. They are in their classes, they want to support them. And this is something that speaks to mindset and speaks to the inclusive nature and belief system that we believe Greenwich has established. But that said, there are going to be a few slides now that we're going to talk about some areas of improvement. Multi-tiered system of supports. We have identified that there are some inconsistencies among the use of the framework to support struggling learners. There's some conflicting beliefs about what it actually means to support students and at what point they should be supported and how long they should be supported before additional intervention should be in place. And also, I would say, some confusion about the language around RTI or response to intervention and how that intersects with the multi-tiered system of supports. The inconsistencies across school, we heard this quite a bit about the IEP PPT process, that staff often feel they are getting conflicting messages from the central office that at times can conflict from the information that's included in what's called the red book. We'll talk about that more. That's the policy and procedure manual that is available to staff. So some inconsistencies there in terms of interpretation and expectations. Parental frustrations about the PPT process. As I mentioned earlier, as they've been identified in previous reports, we certainly heard as well frustration specifically around trust, collaboration, information sharing, and adherence to timelines from the parent perspective. When it comes to the academic achievement of students with disabilities, as I mentioned, Greenwich is a high-performing district. Students with disabilities perform at a higher rate generally on standardized tests than their peers do across the state. However, I want to share one example with you that in fifth grade math, between the 2015, 16, and 2018, 19 school years, the overall gap between students without disabilities in Greenwich and those with was 50 percentage points. So there still is substantial room to identify additional ways to support students with IEPs in ensuring that they leave high school with the academic skills that they need. Resource support, so we saw and heard about some inconsistent specialized supports for students with low incidence disabilities or those with significant needs. And that at times, the way that the resource support or teachers that were providing support for them was not as clear as it could be. Continuing on, this is an extension of the one I just started to talk about. The continuum of services, so currently, and this is in part because there has been such an emphasis on inclusive practices or including students that students with unique learning needs might not be accessing the learning supports they need. They might not be specialized enough. There's one thing to have inclusion in name, which is the next thing on here, where students are physically located in a general education classroom with their peers. But if they're not able to access the material, if they're not able to understand and have scaffolded supports for them, that it's, they will continue to struggle with being able to accelerate in ways that we know that you would like them to. We saw very little and heard little, very little about co-teaching, which is in the special education world, a pedagogy that is generally puts a general education teacher and a special education teacher together teaching. And the purpose of that is to have a general education teacher be continuing on the core curriculum, providing the content, and then a special education teacher providing specialized supports along the way so that students in the classroom have the support of both instructors. We didn't see that happening in a routine way at the elementary or high school level. And along those same lines, there is a collaborative teaching loose framework, I'll say, that's known as the academic lab, where students with IEPs receive support, pull out support, or they go to a separate place to receive support from a special education teacher. What we understood and what we saw in our classroom visits is that it's not, the focus of those academic labs are not always about instruction that's happening in the moment or in parallel to what might be happening in that general education classroom where the student came from. But it's about, specifically about IEP goals and that it's at times reactionary to supporting the student after an academic issue may be arising. So moving on, as I mentioned before, just as important as the areas that we went through around the academic side, support for teaching and learning needs to be in order so that those academic programs can shine. In terms of strengths, we heard loud and clear that the current superintendent is trusted and seen as an advocate for families and for students. There's organizational commitment to this process. The engagement that we've had has been phenomenal. And just the fact that you are spending the time, the day after school, wanting to go through this to get a focus and a jumpstart on planning for next year, I think speaks to that commitment. There's an opportunity now, given the start of the new interim chief of people personnel services, to set a new course, to take this report and have it be the framework for moving ahead in terms of change. Evolve, so evolve has been a longstanding budgetary process in terms of allocating staff to schools. It had, there's had been a lot of complexity and confusion around how this worked. And so actually, for this current school year, for the 2021 school year, it was not used in the budgeting process. And our understanding is not, is that it's not going to be used. It wasn't in the planning for next year either. So we saw that as a strength in terms of moving towards something that is more understandable and can be readily accessed and talked about by school staff as well as central office staff. There's a parent handbook that's available on the district's website. It has information about the process, about what it means to have a student with a disability, and staffing ratios. From the comparisons that we've done to other districts, and we have data from about 80 districts across the US. Greenwich falls in the category of what we would consider relatively well-resourced when it comes to teachers, instructional assistants, or parent educators, nurses, psychologists, and speech therapists. This does not mean necessarily that staff are in the right place right now. We are looking at the whole picture, all staff across all buildings and looking at the ratios that way. As we'll go further, Matthew, you can move to the next slide. There is certainly some work to be done around that staffing model and looking even more deeply at ratios. The procedure guide, in terms of an opportunity for improvement, that read the red book that I mentioned is pretty extensive. It's known by staff, but it requires a lot of updating and that doesn't always occur as timely as it needs to. And it is so dense, it's several hundred pages with regulations and other things in it. Valuable information, but it's difficult at times to access it and to find information quickly. The strategic plan, we know you're about to embark on a new one relatively soon. But even in that, there was a showcase of how stakeholder satisfaction when it comes to parents and even students, really, there's room for improvement. That was measured by the Panorama Stakeholder Engagement Survey. In terms of the Department for People Personnel Services, as I said, where you're on a new course, you can be on a new course now with a new leader in that department. And that there's an opportunity to restructure in a way that's clear about how particularly school staff and parents can access that department, who they go to for what information. And we also recommended changing the name. This is, as we said, an opportunity for a new direction. And perhaps a name change to the office could send that message and make it clear as to what functions actually fall within that unit. The staffing model, this was the extension of evolve, is that it's, it has not been well-understood or particularly transparent or documented. So about how staff are allocated, specifically special education staff are allocated to school buildings and what the process is. If there is a need for a change, what that actually entails and how school staff, principals in particular, can go about that requesting staff. So we recommend taking a far deeper look at developing a model that is clear and also supports the needs of the continuum that we have talked about and the programming that we have talked about. And finally, out of district placement data. This has been a core part of our, of looking and understanding the way that Greenwich operates. We heard a great deal about the number of students who are in placements either through a legal settlement or a parental placement. But that data around this is not always married with the actual agreements about how a student has gotten to that placement or monitored against financial data. As you'll see in our report, and I know has been talked about in other board meetings, that there is, has been a growing percentage of the budget in special education dedicated to paying for tuition for students who are Greenwich residents but are not attending those public, your public schools. And so the, our, having a further structure where you are looking at the data and understanding the patterns behind it will be critical to making any sort of impact in addition to also looking at programming and understanding why it is that parents or families are interested in pursuing that option. For parent engagement, I think even just as evidenced by the number of people who logged on tonight, you have active parents, you have engaged parents who want to be part of this process. There are two committees actually that spent significant time thinking about the experience of families and helping them access services for their children with IEPs. That's the PTAs 2E or Twice Exceptional Committee as well as the Special Education Advisory Council or CAC. They're active partners and have served for, as strong advocates for students and their families. There is communication outreach. We heard a lot about, I know this was mostly because of COVID, but the impact was significant, the Friday emails that come out. And that's just one means that we know you're communicating with stakeholders. And that was certainly a plus, that that's a focus area. And once again, you've heard me say this in various ways before, but parents also feel that GPS staff are knowledgeable. They're generally working in the best interest of the child and the responsive. That came from conversations we have with parents and also came from the hundreds of survey responses in terms of the open comments that we got back from that data collection method. As with every area, there are certain recommendations or areas that we think could be improved when it comes to parent engagement. One is more communication, having more routine communication, not just about what's happening at the district level, but about children's progress, you know, their own children's progress or challenges they face so that they can feel like they can support their children or have conversations earlier if there is some sort of struggling occurring. The pace of change. As I've mentioned, there have been several reports in the past. And that is one indicator that had been mentioned many times to us is that the limited change from a parent perspective about the enacting recommendations from previous reports, but also addressing their parent concerns that have been voiced over several years. And that has led to limited trust and that undercurrent of mistrust that parents have, I would say it's mostly around the PPS office. We certainly heard a little bit about the district overall, but really, it's understanding what special education means to them. Then that's why, that's where they voice a lot more about the PPS office. And then advocacy and equity. Parents demonstrating or indicating that they have to strongly advocate for an evaluation if they feel like their child is struggling and that services parents think their children need, they feel like they have to fight for them. But that by doing so, they believe they're having greater access to services. So that's what leads to some of the inequities, perceived inequities. So I'm going to turn this over to Matt. I know we went through a lot of topics here, but he's going to walk us through the recommendations as aligned to the effectiveness domains.
Very much, Jennifer. I think when you hear these recommendations, they truly do dovetail the opportunities as well, or the strengths as well as the opportunities, but they are action-oriented by design. So when you hear these, you will be hearing actions. Next slide, please. So I'll start with multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS. Build on your current response to intervention or RTI and positive behavior process to develop a unified and clear structure of MTSS for academic achievement, positive behavior, and social emotional growth for all students. Because we know that MTSS is for all students. It's not a special education initiative, but it has significant impacts on supporting students that are struggling. Create guides to explain how the intervention models such as RTI, PBIS complement one another. Create guides to explain how the intervention models such as RTI, PBIS complement one another. The next is a district leadership team. Develop an MTSS cross-departmental district-level team. Include senior leadership, school principals, and representatives from every educational unit. So we're talking special education, Title I, bilingual, gifted. Schedule these meetings at least monthly to review, update, and operationalize, as well as monitor the fidelity of these implementations. Establish comparable school-based leadership teams to oversee MTSS implementation at each school. This is really about measuring effectiveness. Expectations. Establish, communicate, support, and monitor clear expectations for MTSS with clear lines of accountability and responsibility across departments and schools, aligning them with relevant standards and guidelines. Guardrails. Determine what expectations will be required district-wide and which will be a school-based decision and/or otherwise. Incorporate the expectations into the administrator, principal, teacher, paraprofessional, and related service personnel evaluations that we know folks are doing it. School-based MTSS teams require all schools to operate a school-based MTSS team to support the problem-solving, database decision-making, at all tiers to support academic advancement and positive behavior. And make sure that it's consistent between schools. Ensure that principals are scheduling time for teams to implement these problem-solving processes. Meet or review progress monitoring and intervention data. Be empowered. Hold folks accountable. Hold yourselves accountable for adjusting school schedules to provide the necessary supports for all struggling students. So when we're helping all struggling students, we're helping students who may later be identified as having a disability or providing data to provide interventions they need to be successful. Written guidance. Create an electronic user-friendly and accessible MTSS manual for school teams and for parents to understand the processes and to document procedures and practices to the management and the operation of this in the district. Include protocols for collecting progress data. That's hugely important. And assessing student growth and what constitutes adequate progress, associated lengths of time to allow for progress. And, and this is important, requirements for initiating a special education evaluation when such progress is not shown. You don't want this to be a slowdown to special education services. Ensure a common understanding and buy-in around the district for the need for MTSS, why and how it's implemented, what desired targets it's intended to meet, what progress the district is making toward achieving the goals. Maintain the manual by updating it regularly as there are changes that will inevitably be required that are district-specific. An electronic dashboard. Develop a transparent and widely accessible district-wide early warning dashboard to monitor student intervention data and growth for academics, as well as behavior to enable leadership at central office and for schools to review all these data, data around student growth, so that you can identify patterns, you can solve problems, and you're making informed decisions. Review and expand the rubrics that are currently in use to have a universal set of documents that are relevant based on grade levels and types of schools. Universal screening. Decide and purchase a standard evidence-based universal screening tool or tools for academics, including dyslexia and behavior, and implement them throughout the district with an initial focus at the elementary level. Professional development. Provide MTSS professional development, inclusive of what's considered in your district as RTI, Response to Intervention, and PBIS, Positive Behavior Supports, for all school-based staff. Have central office staff develop trainings for school-level staff so unified voice is heard throughout the district. And equity, which is an enormous piece of MTSS. Provide training on the implementation of race, ethnicity, language, socioeconomic status, and culture constructs for MTSS teams when developing student intervention plans. And we know MTSS and the over-identification of students with disabilities go hand in hand. It can be leveraged to curb those issues. The next item, universal design for learning, also known as UDL. Training. Provide clear guidance and mandatory training for all district and school leaders and teachers on the principles of universal design for learning. This is a construct for learning and how these principles can be applied in the development of curriculum instruction and assessment. Leverage assistant principals and teachers who previously received UDL training. We heard this throughout, that there was in the past an emphasis on UDL training to help guide training content based on their lessons learned and to actively support the training process. Implementation, huge one. Use these UDL principles so that students can access grade-level material and come close and help close achievement gaps between students with disabilities and their non-disabled peers. Consult with technology leaders and personnel about potential purchases associated with the potential impact. I will say this too, universal design for learning, much like MTSS, it is beneficial for all students. It's not a special education initiative, but by design, it can significantly help and support students with disabilities. The next, identification practices and disproportionality monitoring. So tracking disproportionality in disability identification. So at least quarterly, use the risk ratio, and that's within the report, to measure the identification rates of students with IEPs by race, ethnicity, and other important indicators such as language status, free and reduced lunch, giftedness, to identify any student group that is two times more likely than peers to be identified as being over-identified. And as Jennifer shared, these are risk ratios. The next, tracking activity timeliness. Analyze timelines to assess if there are delays in providing interventions, delays in determining inadequate student progress, delays in initiating a special education evaluation based on data and evaluation completions. The next, tracking school identification rates. Analyze longitudinal data to determine which schools may be identifying students with IEPs at a rate that is disproportionately higher than other schools. And we know that this can happen when there is disproportionality. Data review and hypotheses with a cross-departmental group of leaders and staff. Use these data to develop hypotheses for identified disproportionate risk ratios for any group of students. Delays in the evaluation referrals and completions and/or schools with disproportionately higher rates. Follow-up. Based on the hypotheses, develop any additional written guidance needed. This is data-informed guidance to clarify procedures and practices and consider additional resources and strategies needed with a written plan if appropriate and provide training to support the implementation. For example, identification disproportionality training. It would include the implications of race, ethnicity, language, socioeconomic status, and culture constructs for school-based teams when you're considering students for an evaluation. And monitoring, this goes without saying, but monitoring based on the areas of practice identified through these activities, identify data to be collected and monitored, along with practices to be monitored, and support the consistent implementation across the district using these data to identify schools needing additional supports. The next, on this is number four and the last on this slide, IEP development. Written procedures include in Greenwich's written special education guidance standards and examples for IEP development processes that are appropriate and consistent across the district. Guides would include but not be limited to present levels of academic performance. That's within the IEP and the data use. IEP goals, accommodations, and progress monitoring. Include a procedure for additional material and human resources that are currently used and/or available to meet particular students' needs, including those needed for students who would otherwise be placed out of district. IEP goals, the goals within the individualized education plan. Ensure IEP goals are based on student needs identified within the present levels, ensuring that these goals are not being created or influenced by district limitations within its current continuum of services. Monitoring the IEPs. Establish and implement a process for periodically reviewing student IEPs for their consistency with expected standards. Consider using a school-based process which would include an impartial GPS facilitator to review, analyze, and discuss IEPs with teacher and related service providers. Electronic data repository. We recommend the district study what electronic data repositories are available to improve data collection ease and subsequent reporting of student data for quarterly IEP progress reporting, and choose one that meets the district's need. And collaboration. Foster positive PPT collaboration by creating more planning time between general education and special education teachers. Ensuring adequate time and coverage for staff participation and transparent processes around timelines, data, information sharing with parents. And this will ensure trust and partnership among PPT members. Provide interpreters for parents who are non-native English speakers and translate IEP dot. Now we're going to move on to the next slide, number five. Inclusive practices, planning, guidance, and implementation. Inclusive education framework. Develop and use a structured framework model that will help promote the implementation of best practices for inclusive education, including the provision of high-yield collaborative teaching, specially-designed instruction, and related services. And we're going to go into recommendations in numbers six through 13 that will associate with that. Implementation guide. Develop a clearly articulated district-school implementation guide based on the inclusive education framework with expected guidance, procedures, and practices. Determine the role of schools to adopt the framework to their unique needs versus GPS requirements. This process could also include GPS's advanced approval for a school to adapt the framework with deviations the district defines as significant. Schedule time for collaboration. Establish written guides for the use of inclusive master school schedules which establish common planning time for collaborative teaching, co-teaching, and other activities for general education teachers with a special education teacher and/or other personnel. Develop various scheduling models that schools can use and/or adapt. And the last, cross-department collaboration through intentional collaboration between the interim PPS chief and the leadership team, the director of curriculum instruction, the math and ELA content specialist. Further study achievement and suspension gaps between students with IEPs and their typically developing peers on standardized assessments, and between students with IEPs by race, ethnicity, English learner status, socioeconomic status, gender, et cetera. And use this information to inform discussions about improving the district's continuum of services, including making inclusive instruction more effective. Number six, general education classroom composition, collaborative teaching, and co-teaching. We'll start with general education classroom composition. Establish a maximum student classroom ratio for students with and without disabilities for general education and monitor the ratio to ensure that these configurations are not inclusion in name only and do not comprise a majority of students with IEPs and 504 plans taught solely by general education teachers. Collaborative consultation. Draft guidance for collaboration and consultative teaching to support students with disabilities. Under this model, gen ed teachers, along with one or more educators, and we're talking a special educator, a reading specialist, an EL teacher, gifted and talented teacher, they're collaborating around the design, the delivery, the monitoring, and the evaluation of instruction in general ed classes with the general education teacher providing instruction. Co-taught instruction. Draft guidance for the delivery of co-taught instruction based on the most effective model for instruction purposes and use of the special educator. Based on the developed guidance, provide intensive professional development and follow-up coaching to give teachers the information and support they need to be true partners in the planning and delivery of classroom instruction. Monitor the implementation of this through classroom walkthrough activities that are guided by observation protocols or a protocol for this purpose. And professional development, and this is an important one here. Provide professional development on collaborative teaching and co-teaching to ensure teachers engage in a true instructional partnership. Provide planning time for general education and special educators and others to become true collaborative partners. Now on to number seven, redesign and rebrand academic labs. Rethink academic lab model. Reimagine and rebrand academic labs by providing written protocols for all grade levels for a flexible grouping model in which students with disabilities are provided intensive supplementary instruction in areas no longer covered by grade-level core curriculum. For example, phonemic awareness, phonics fluency, math computation. Ensure these classes have the materials that students need to increase the trajectory of learning in the particular areas of need. View this setting as an extension of the classroom instruction for students with IEPs who need short bursts of additional time outside for purposes of grade-level content. Inclusive supplemental learning model. Consider a staffing, or consider staffing a learning model for students with and without disabilities with a general educator to support regular classroom lessons, to introduce lessons with more intensity and reinforce what was taught. And professional development. Provide professional development for teachers involved in these models so they understand their roles and can carry them out. Number eight, redesign and rebrand comprehensive program models. The first in this, analyze the current comprehensive classes. We recommend the district complete a deeper analysis of students' instruction and materials in each of the current comprehensive classes. Area of disability, skill, communication, and/or other supports provided, assessment data, student-teacher, paraprofessional ratios, to create an accurate description of who and what is taught. Also, for each class by comprehensive intensity, assess the student profile that include their individual instructional needs as well as progress they have made over the past school year. The next, reconstruct instructional models. Based on this program review, analyze gaps in instructional needs, materials, assistive technology, student-to-adult ratios within and between current programs. Create and rebrand with new models that collectively address all individualized student needs and is flexible enough to maximize the receipt of grade-level content, interaction with non-disabled peers, and improve achievement and positive behavior along with social, emotional well-being. Continue to resist grouping students by disability label and instead rely on their learning needs regardless of disability nomenclature. Further, do not limit resources to a particular instructional model. Instead, allow for the flexibility so learning materials and other resources are allocated based on student need and are not dictated by a particular model. And document the models with written information to inform professional development and resource needs. And again, professional development. Provide professional development for all personnel associated with the newly developed models of instruction. As part of this more generalized professional development specified in these recommendations, emphasize that in all circumstances, it is not appropriate for students to be referred to by their placement name, such as comprehensive or mildly comprehensive, et cetera, as using such titles is not respectful and stigmatizing. Instead, emphasize the use of people-first language where the emphasis is on the student and not their placement. Next slide, number nine. Equity and access to advanced placement for students with disabilities. Address barriers to equity and access. Develop a coherent plan across grade levels in schools to enable a higher proportion of potentially qualified students with disabilities to benefit from advanced academic studies and courses. As part of this process, consider teacher or parent input to analyze current barriers to access for students with disabilities and develop a plan to mitigate these challenges. Next, written guidance and training. Provide written guidance and other information to IEP teams with school-based staff and parents about how students with disabilities can access advanced placement courses or advanced courses in general with appropriate supports and accommodations. And track increased enrollment. Establish a goal and a target to increase current enrollment of students with disabilities in advanced courses and/or other enrichment or advanced learning programming and monitor enrollment data on a quarterly basis. And number 10, Twice Exceptional, the identification as a student who is gifted. Establish parameters for the district's identification of students who are Who are to give clarity to students who are twice exceptional. Such as students with disabilities who are gifted. Ensure that the district's usage of the gifted term aligns with state guidance and data reporting requirements. Potential for gifted identification. Review records of students with disabilities or data to identify those with advanced aptitude or skills to support potential identification. As a student who's gifted. Guidance, training and support. Provide schools with the guidance, the training and support necessary. To build, understand and implement viable programming and strategies for twice exceptional students. So you're nurturing the student's potential, supporting the development of compensatory strategies. Identifying learning gaps for potential explicit instruction. You're fostering social and emotional development and enhancing students' capacity. To address the mixed ability needs, the students' capacity, the teachers' capacity. Number 11, special education transportation. Develop protocols to clearly delineate and communicate between the transportation office. And the pupil personnel services office. Include a provision that requires the PPT meeting. Notice to include transportation personnel when non-routine transportation is likely to be discussed. Also include a provision showing who would be responsible for sharing. The PPT notice and meeting invitation to specified transportation personnel. Also if transportation. Based on student disabilities is not clearly written and understood, include this information in the transportation protocol. Clearly define the role of the transportation office as it relates. To the PPS office to ensure that once an IEP includes transportation services. The transportation personnel must implement the service. Regardless of whether they agree or disagree with the PPT decision. And monitoring, monitor this protocol to ensure that it is implemented as intended. Next assistive technology. Assistive technology planning and quality indicators. We recommend the district create and implement with fidelity an assistive technology plan. And measure its overall success by using the quality indicators of assistive technology, which is designed. To assess overall quality of AT programming. And professional development. Provide staff training on how AT can be used for myriad of student needs. Next, out-of-district placements. Parent outreach, talk with parents and PPT teams who sought or obtained an out-of-district placement to better understand their motivations. And GPS program gaps. School assessment, visit or obtain. Other information about the most common out-of-district placement to ascertain how these resources are different. From any currently available for students within your school district, the schools that are physically within your district. And a cost analysis. Consider the cost of out-of-district placements, including costs associated with transportation and complaint due process. And how this money can be used instead to provide these and other resources within GPS's schools. Use this information to develop instructional models described in the recommendations that we've discussed prior. Now we're on to leadership. Number 14, inclusive education vision and planning. Guiding vision and mission. Have the board of education and GPS management include effective inclusive education in their vision and mission. Next, clear expectations. Either in the vision, mission or other documents to communicate. Schools, parents and the broader community that the district expects. And will take steps to ensure that one, students with disabilities make the greatest amount of progress possible in the gen ed curriculum. Or modified curriculum per IEPs through rigorous and high-quality standards aligned instruction. And specifically designed instruction interventions along with differentiated instruction, accommodations and modifications. And two, again, expectations partnerships with families are trusting and collaborative. Next, the strategic plan. Develop a long-range strategic plan based on the recommendations discussed as well as other relevant information. Fifteen pupil personnel services organizational structure. Reorganize the PPS office by function. Reducing the number of direct reports to the chief and adding instructional coach positions specifically designed to model support. Use of high-quality inclusive practices. And specially designed instruction by special educators. Either change the name of the department to one such as specialized instruction and support services. Or clarify the functions within the existing office so all are clear on its focus. And number 16, cross-departmental collaboration. Schedule collaborative meetings. Establish a schedule for routine collaborative meetings between the PPS office and other departments such as English learners. With individuals necessary to share information, problem solve and resolve issues of mutual concern. Ensure that all central office personnel who support schools meet to share information about common issues they can collectively address. Collaborative work, use these collaborative partnerships to establish consistent. And integrative approaches to support improved instruction for various purposes by creating cross-functional work groups. And last, within this key performance indicators. Set goals for all cross-departmental initiatives. And establish KPIs with targets to measure the extent to which they are beneficial or require modification. Next, we're going to go on to high expectations. Academic optimism and growth mindset. The communication of high expectations. Set high expectations. Both through establishing an inclusive vision and through joint statements from the superintendent and board of education. Regarding the provision of rigorous instruction and supports needed. Related services delineated in IEPs that students have the necessary tools they need to access high-quality instruction. Collaborative support, guide the design of implementation structures and resources needed to help foster greater collaboration across disciplines. Grade levels and areas specific of specific expertise. And monitoring, keep hearing this over and over again, it's no accident, monitoring, monitoring data. Develop and implement protocols for fidelity checks on IEPs. Delivered versus prescribed instruction and services, so the services that were, that were delivered, that act, that occurred. And the ones that are in terms of what's prescribed in the IEP. So that can include co-teaching, instructional and testing accommodation modifications, specially designed instruction, related services. Eighteen elevate rigor. Ensure that all professional development designed and delivered elevates instructional rigor. So that it includes, it is inclusive of students of disabilities. Focus information on best practices for motivating learners and setting high expectations. Addressing universal design for learning and differentiated instruction, progress monitoring and mastery. Resources include how this information will be supported with necessary material and human resources. And nine, measure instructional beliefs and practices. Annual teacher survey, conduct an annual survey to measure teachers' instructional beliefs. And the extent to which they understand presumed competence. Analyze results by school and by teacher role and school plans, develop a plan. Protocol by which each school site would design instructional. And support improvements to increase student achievement and positive behavior outcomes over time. Next, human capital, professional development. Something that you've heard throughout this conversation. Develop a PD plan based on the needs identified in this report. And have it be targeted to different audiences, so general educations, he teaches, special education teachers, related service personnel. Parent professionals, parents. Learning forward standards. Ground the training in the learning forward standards for professional development and embed the following components. One, annual mandatory annual trainings, as we know that there's great importance. With regards to principal and assistant principal leadership on special ed matters and PPT meetings in the buildings. Establish a robust training plan for these folks. And other school administrators on areas of mutual information needs specific to special ed administration. Determine which training principals and assistant principals and other school-based folks. What they, what they're required to attend each year and develop a process to ensure that it actually happens. Cross-functional teams, cross-train individuals from different divisions. Different departments to maximize knowledge and skills to leverage collective resources to provide direct support, mentoring, coaching and technical assistance. The principals. High-quality trainers, ensure that all trainers are knowledgeable and effective. And identifying use exemplary school-based staff in addition to others. And we saw time and time again, your district has many, many exemplary school-based staff who are capable of doing that. Access to differentiated learning. Differentiate professional learning according to each audience's skills, experience and needs. And have the professional learning and technical assistance continue for new personnel. Who are providing the additional support. Multi-formats, and we learned this through COVID, but. Multiple formats can be leveraged, videos, webinars, narratives. Different presentation approaches. And embed that so that you can build it out and you can have blended learning opportunities. So teachers can more easily access the content. And exemplary implementation models, identify and share district-wide best practices that. Demonstrate high expectations and effective implementation to ensure that they're including students with IEPs, English learners, students who are twice exceptional. Encourage staff to visit exemplary schools and set aside time for that to happen. The next area, systems and structures. Special education policy and procedure manual, red book, and I'm not talking about the magazine in the grocery store. Red book revise the existing red book into an interactive web-based. GPS special education manual to support user-friendly and transparent access. To procedures and practices relevant to the management and operations of special education. And to which school staff can be held accountable for implementing. Streamline the resources so school teams can easily access relevant information. And use embedded hyperlinks within the document to provide information for staff as needed. Update this manual on a routine basis, include criteria, procedures and practices for each area in the manual. Relevant to the implementation of these recommendations. And a criteria for child find. Make it user-friendly, that's key. Number 22. Transparent staffing allocation model. The current staff allocation analysis, conduct an in-depth analysis of staffing allocations. To better understand how schools organize personnel by grade, by subject. To provide services required in IEPs. And we're not saying that that's limited just to your special education personnel. New allocation model, create a work group with representatives from school and central office leadership. Talking about principals, representatives, special and general ed teachers, related service personnel. And PPS and finance personnel. To develop a new transparent funding model and assess the extent to which current personnel are available to support the intended outcomes of effective service delivery. And continued enhancement of inclusive practices. Next, communicate model. Communication model, address gaps within the current staff and review annually. Make revised, the revised formula transparent and evaluate needed changes. For the short and long-term review and review on an annual basis. Next, 23, hot issue, out-of-district placements of the student data and finance monitoring. Monitor placements, develop a system. To monitor out-of-district placements, including the number of students placed, number of years each place. The GPS school from which the student was placed, the reason for placement, the trigger for placement. And review this annually and assess placements based on the data that we just talked about. At least annually, review trends and how the district might reconfigure its human and material resources. To provide PPTs better and more flexible in district options for students. And to give PPS leaders more options when considering settlement decisions. And educational justifications for GPS placement. To present during due process hearings. Next, family and community engagement, so 24 enact. Report recommendations, so implement and publicly report recommendation progress. In order to build community trust. Implement the recommendations in this report and publicly report at least twice a year. On the progress made or the obstacles and delays encountered, be transparent. Twenty-five, family friendly guides, parent information. Collaborate with school personnel, principals and other school-based leaders. And local advocacy group representatives to develop a parent manual. Including information and resource links that would be useful to parents, understanding the IEP process. Supplement it with one-page brochures to further access this information. And ensure the information is accessible to parents with diverse linguistic needs and sensory limitations. And parent-friendly training. Plan face-to-face training and online modules to provide parents an understanding of the information in the manual. Ensure training is accessible to parents with diverse linguistic needs or sensory limitations. Next, your website and its content. At least annually, review and update the materials posted on your district's website regarding special ed instructional models. Related services, supplementary aids and services. And ensure that it's clearly accessible and comprehensive. And accessible to parents with diverse linguistic needs and sensory limit or sensory limitations. Number 27, parent trainings. Have a parent training plan in consultation with representatives. Of parent support groups, develop a training plan for families in the areas of IP process. Role of the child study team. Helpful hints for parents at home and how families can take an active and collaborative role at the IP meeting. Twenty-eight, family engagement vision. With representatives of parent support groups. Preschool special education leaders who've earned high survey results in this area as well as other GPS diverse representatives. Have a discussion about family engagement specific to special education. Based on these discussions, create a core belief vision statement. Of agreed-upon ideals, share it with other stakeholders to build family engagement support across the district. And that does it for the recommendations within this report. So now with all that said, I know that was a lot of information. Questions from the board? We'll tag team on this.
Thank you, Matthew. Before we get to questions, I'm going to let the board get back to their seats and maybe give Dr. Jones a opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you Chair Bernstein. First of all, it's exciting to have the report. There's been a lot of work that went into this, so thank you to PCG. I also, I do want to acknowledge Jen Lau and Linda Valentine, who were the two staff people. That pulled data literally all year long. And I look at what Jen Lau had on her plate this year, she was also running the K5 remote school. So I just feel very, very lucky that we had two people who were able to get them everything that they needed. I'm very excited about the recommendations and you know, there's not, there's not a lot in there, actually that surprises me and I think that that's a good thing. You know, we've recognized as a staff that, for instance, the RTI MTSS was a weakness for us. We engaged a consultant at the end of last year who continued the work this year to do site visits. To visit every school, look at all the processes, so I think on some of these were really set up well. To continue to move us forward. And even with the database and I know. When I look at, it's probably what Mr. O'Keefe would say, even on our out-of-district placement data. We started, I want to say around November this year, getting a report. Every Monday morning, we've continued to enhance that. And so you've just given us the next layer of how to continue to make sure we have really strong historical data as well, so. I'm just, I'm excited about the recommendations and I, we are very, very committed to getting this work done. And I will say our interim director, Dr. Holly Ingataller, I have to say it really fast because it's a tough name, Holly Ingataller. She actually read it, read, you know, read the summary on Friday or Saturday morning and. She already has, her mind is already churning as well, she's excited about it. And she will watch this meeting in full as well, so we're really excited to get going.
Thank you. Before we get to board discussion, Karen Hirsch, Karen Kowalski, I wanted to. Give you an opportunity to weigh in as you sat on the committee, so to for you guys as to who goes first.
You know, as we've mentioned many times in the past, you know, this was done, you know. In as much of as transparent manner as possible and we do really want to ensure that we take public. Comment and feedback prior to starting the action planning portion of this. As we need to start on that action planning sooner rather than later so that we can get some of the more immediate needs addressed. Before our school year starts next year and also. Have, have our new PPS director, interim PPS director in place at the start of July, have her opportunity to weigh in as well. On this, so you know, I know we'll have a lot of work ahead of us this summer. And hoping that we will also have the opportunity to get some input, not just from the public, but again, as I said, from. but again, as I said, from staff and our new interim PPS director, as Dr. Jones is starting down the path of budget planning for next year. As I know, a lot of these recommendations do come with a budgetary impact, staffing impact, and other things. I'll also say that I wasn't entirely surprised by the majority of recommendations suggested in the executive summary. Some of these are issues we've certainly known about for quite some time and many of the recommendations we have heard from other reviews of the program. And it's clear, many of the recommendations, if implemented, have the possibility of a positive, have, will have a positive impact for all of our students, general education and those with special learning needs. And what really struck me from the report is the fact that many of the suggestions are things that we can and should begin working on to implement now. Other of these will certainly require more discussion and more time. And the report even notes that some of these are maybe critical to the success of our special education program, but the changes will not overcur, will not occur overnight. And as we've said, some of the impact will impact, have an impact on staffing, facility usage, current educational delivery models, which means it'll also have a budgetary impact and require a long, long-term planning for implementation. So as we've been saying, we do want to sort of level set people's expectations. As this was always known, that a lot of these recommendations may take years to complete. It's not going to happen overnight. Some of them, we also have to see the appetite and ability to be able to do some of them. Although I certainly feel that a lot of these are things that we can handle on a more immediate basis. And I know Karen had some comments as well.
Ms. Kowalski.
Thank you. And thanks for the very comprehensive presentation. I just want to send my thanks and appreciation to PCG for all their hard work that clearly went into this and everything that they have done over the course of the last year in putting this together. I think they've highlighted many things that we knew, many things that we didn't know. And obviously, we all have our work cut out for us in order to reshape our, our education program for our most special learners. I think from my perspective with respect to the board, I think we need to have public comment sooner rather than later. I hesitate, I thought maybe we should wait till September. I don't think we should wait till September, but I'm conscious of the fact that it is technically the first day of summer for GPS students. But I think the community and the parents involved in, in this process are paying attention. And I think if we can hold a specific meeting by the board just to address this topic and have questions on this topic alone sooner than rather than later and put it by Zoom so that everybody can participate, I think that would be in our best interest because, one, I think we need to come up with a strategy as a board on what are our priorities, what are we going to tackle first, how are we going to tackle them? And what is the timeline by which we're going to get these things accomplished? I think we need to, as a board, need to hold ourselves accountable to this report. We paid for it, we got what we asked for. This essentially blew up our entire specialized program. And I think we knew that that was coming, but now we need to take responsibility and ownership for it and figure out how we're going to get it done. This obviously will affect budget planning. That's coming, that is in process, it's always in process. But it's in process and we need to figure out when we prioritize, what we need to get paid for and what we need to do now. That's my comment.
Thank you. I'll just jump in on the process side. I fully believe we want to have public comment as soon as possible. However, I do understand we all want time to digest the full report. The other factor is the interim director doesn't start until July 1. So sometime after July 1, but not too long after July 1, we'll probably be looking to schedule that meeting specifically for discussion around the action planning here from the administration as to what they're thinking for first steps for the summer, what we think are the most important things that need to be worked on, as well as obviously hear from the parent community. With that, I actually want to thank the parents. You know, this has been a topic that I've talked about since I ran for the board eight years ago, got on the board. I'm so glad we're finally here, took a lot longer than I wish it had. But there's opportunity, a lot, a lot of opportunity to really make change happen. I'll echo what Ms. Hirsch said, it's, it's not going to all be overnight, but I think there are some things that we can do faster than others. I think we need to identify priorities. And so I guess, Matthew, I'll turn it to you and the team. Basically, when, when I look at the summary, and obviously we haven't seen the full report yet, and that'll be my, my, my summer reading. There's 28 recommendations with subparts, right? And I've learned from my professional existence plus my time on the board that if everything's a priority, nothing is a priority. And so I guess my, my first question to you is, you know, how, how do we start thinking about what is most impactful for students that we can do right away without years of waiting, without having to wait for additional budget or, or anything that's going to take us two or three years? Like what can we do that's going to be most impactful for students as we start planning for the next school year? I don't want to wait.
Yeah, I can, I can start a response to this and I'm sure Dr. Miller will also have comments to add. But I think of most importance, action planning and through the action planning process determining which are of the most low-hanging opportunities and, and really setting yourselves accountable through an action plan as to which you'll accomplish and when. We by design do not say, number one, do this, number two, do that, and number three, go there. We truly put this on the district through an action planning process to make those priority decisions. Dr. Miller, what would you add to that?
I think we mentioned it in one of the recommendations, but I would say one of the keys, and I can find which one it is here, is to develop that committee that is going to be focused on this work. So really establishing, it's number 16, these, this cross-departmental collaborative kind of structure. In that way, you're able to hold yourselves accountable. So I think developing that infrastructure first that dovetails from the action planning, this extension of it, that is the first key, is, is having that structure that you're going to revisit the recommendations every time. And I will just highlight what Matt said in that we intentionally do not rank the recommendations because we want to work with you in the process of identifying which ones are going to be short-term, which ones are going to be long-term, which ones you have, as I heard earlier, an appetite to take on right away. So that's the, that's part of this process.
All right, thank you. I just want to make one more comment before I turn it over to others. You made mention earlier of the fact that we meet the state requirements, right, meets requirements. That has never been our standard here. It's nice to know that we do that. But I think Peter, Peter Scher will remember the conversation we had, mere compliance is not our target. I live in the world of compliance, that, that's not what we're going for. That doesn't actually best serve our students and our families and our community. So I guess as we, as we embark on this journey forward, just keep that in mind. All right, other discussion members, Mr. Scher.
Guys at PGZ, P. You guys on the screen. I know, Public Consulting or PCG. Oh, I thank you for the work. I know we're paying you for it, but I know you probably put in a lot more hours than we're actually building the contract. And of course, everybody else who was involved in this, who participates in this, you can always count on, in Greenwich, a lot of help and involvement along the way. And it's clear we got that in spades. I need to digest this, there's a lot to digest. I'm trying to focus on the big takeaways. It is so easy, and I see this all the time in public schools. It's like, there's this like itchy, itchy cultural thing of go do task work. And somehow task work will move the ball. And I've learned long ago that there's a lot of task work going on in school systems and lots of organizations. And then the needle doesn't move. So it's not for lack of effort, it's not for lack of interest. It just requires a lot of discipline to work on the right things and focus on the right things and not get distracted from thinking you're making progress because you're crossing stuff off a list like you're going through the grocery store. What I wanted to back up is I, and I need a lot more on this. I took away a couple of big things in here and I'm going to put them in my words, not yours. I know what it is to be a consultant and I know you guys have a particular approach and language and thank you for being ultimately professional, but ultimately, the client, us, needs to cut through that language and translate it into things that we can process and understand. My takeaways, I had a couple of takeaways here and I appreciate if Matt and you and the team could comment on it or just clarify. I take away that there is, as Mr. Bernstein said, there was this compliance orientation and it is clearly manifesting as state regulations or this or that, we're complying. So we get this check the box and, and then we think as a result, it's actually having an impact. And I don't know if it was or not, but I live in the world of correlations. It looks like that compliance had a really low correlation to outcomes for kids. So that was one thing I took away. The, the second thing I took, which I suppose is good, but it didn't get us where we needed to be. So that compliance is, is not particularly comforting. The second thing I took, what took away is I haven't seen all the data. I'm looking forward to seeing, but you said we've compared ourselves to essentially 80 districts and we are well-resourced. Which means as a community, we've applied the resources. It's not as if in, we're a district where we're not spending the amount of money we need to be spending. You can always spend more, someone will always want you to spend more. But I'm hearing you guys say, we're, we're starting from a position of being well-resourced. And I noticed that you characterize that across essentially five, I think it were five domains and your strengths or weaknesses that you, you, you talked about that instructional, you know, there were a bunch of things. So it seemed that it was spread across, there wasn't one domain where you said, oh, in that one, you're particularly under-resourced. But the third thing I took away, which was through consultant speak, I want to say it was in maybe slide five or six. Knowing what I know about special education, which is not enough, knowing about education, which is not enough. But I've been doing this now, this is my 12th year. All of the major functional areas of educational delivery in special education, you listed like five or six of them and they were all functionally deficient and management deficient. So you were saying that in a really nice way, but I was sitting there, you know, choking as I'm sitting over there because I'm thinking, there's not two areas here that are broken. All of the major areas are broken. Now, it doesn't mean we don't have good clay to work with, which I think you guys pointed out. But from a management and functional area, we've got some really serious issues across all of the major areas that make a good program functional. The other thing I took away is, Matt, which I, I think I talked to you about this when you interviewed me as a board member. I see embedded in your recommendations and it's a presumed model, ideal model. And I worry about that. And the reason I worry about that is I can't figure out to what degree that model is kind of current state and to the degree that there are opportunities for more innovative models that are appearing. They're certainly appearing in these private schools that are popping up everywhere. Mining school, this public school district failures in delivery, they're popping up as specialized schools all over the place. And they're getting lots of business from us, taxpayers paying for it. And I've always struggled with the degree to which we need to be more innovative and maybe leave behind old models and think about newer models to do a much better job at delivering. I don't want to optimize the old model. I want to be broad enough thinking about new models that could be much more effective, game changers. So I took that away and I guess I'm wondering if there's anything wrong or did I misunderstand something that you said? Because based upon that, I want to talk about where I think we need to go as a board. So let me just pause there for a second.
I know that I can speak to the, the fact that you are right now looking at the executive summary. In the full report, we did an extensive peer district review where a lot of data was gathered thereafter. And so as you digest this, and I urge you to read the full report in its entirety, and I, knowing you, you will. But I, I think you will find a great deal of data from that informing where we went. So addressing that particular point, I don't know if, if there are other points that you'd like me to further articulate on.
I wanted to talk specifically about the implied model because the implied model, you, you guys said you need to do all these things, 28 things or however many there are. But I was realizing it's executing against an implied model. It's implied every school tier supports, there's a bunch of baked in there. And I think I asked at the beginning of this, what are the best practices options? Not what's the singular best practice? So maybe I, as I say, I need to go read the report because I'm sure it'll be in there and I'll have a lot more questions afterwards. But it's kind of like you could very easily flip to and you could flip over this. You guys referenced strategic at a couple of places. You could just say, oh, that's the model, that's the one you should do, now just get at the task. And it seems to me this is a point in time where the, the board has an opportunity working with you and our educators to step back and say, okay, what's the best long-range plan? What's the best long-range vision? Get that, you know, everybody holding hands and saying, that's what it's going to be for the next three to five years. And then you get at the task of implementing towards that. I worry about getting to implementations before everybody's bought into completely what the model is. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, you know, I think, Jennifer, I'm curious what you'd add to that in terms of the additional data points that were leveraged to, to come to the recommendations we landed on. Are there any additional thoughts?
Read the report.
Yeah, it's 167 pages, so it's pretty dense. There's a lot of detail there. What I will say though is, as I mentioned in the beginning, there are certain indicators that we look for and that's based on keeping current on relevant best practices, innovative practices in special education service delivery. So we, we don't come to this work with a prescribed, absolutely, this is what you have to do, every context is different. But I will say that the principles that we have included in the recommendations are, they incorporate the practices that we stay current on and the landscape that we are watching on a regular basis.
Okay, let me just say this, Peter, this is my, my point to the board, I think from here. There's a lot of work, I don't think, I, I used to think walking into the room, wait till September. No, that can't be, I don't think that can be. I agree, we need to hear from parents like right away while this is fresh. We need to hear that community input. I think absolutely, this is not a, hey, delegate it off to management. I'm not in agreement with that. I think that this is, I've heard it loud and clear. The board, the board needs to be setting priorities before anybody goes, runs off and does anything. But, you know, so if the board doesn't engage quickly and the board doesn't engage in a meaningful way, we're going to stop progress. So I think the board needs to do that right away. The other thing that is absolutely needed is, this is huge. This could easily be the thing that ate Greenwich public schools. And it is so important and it needs focus, but it cannot be the only thing that we're doing. So we need to put in place a strong structure to govern this as a project. doing. So, uh, we need to put in place a strong structure to govern this as a project. It has to include the board. It can't just be delegated off to the administration. It needs to be, the board needs to be into this in a big way to support the administration. It's going to be an ongoing effort that needs strong guidance and collaboration. So I'd like to talk about if others agree, how we're going to get more information from the public quickly. How we're going to be able to set some initial priorities. And then how we're going to put in a structure to govern this and manage this, which will be multi-tiered. And I think we need to figure that out. Can't go on summer break without figuring this out. We have to do it either now or schedule another meeting next week or whatever.
Ms. Hirsch.
Well, what you're talking about is actually what we had started our conversations about a couple of months ago, which is the actual, actual action planning phase as to how we prioritize what we are going to do in the immediate term, um, and short term versus longer term action planning. Uh, we as a board have to discuss how we want to do that. No, we discussed this a few months ago, the action planning and, and the board decided at the time that they wanted to wait to see the report to start that. So, no, no. So I'm agreeing and saying exactly what you were saying is something that the action planning would take place of that. Um, there are other districts throughout the country that have specific special education strategic plans that are separate from the district strategic plan. And, um, that might be something, uh, that I was going to ask PCG about if they would recommend, because our action planning documents could then be transferred into a strategic plan, which then has built in supports and, um, opportunities for those who are in charge of certain areas, uh, and timelines with reporting back to the board, reporting on, um, movement towards, uh, specific goals. But much like you had said, Mr. Sher, I, I agree. I think a lot of this is there are a lot of intrinsic and educational changes, um, suggested or recommended throughout this document that are going to take a longer term, um, lead us to take a longer term look at, uh, and the appetite for doing so. But a lot of the recommendations will support, um, all of our students, all, all 9,000 students. In identifying students with needs sooner, in supporting, uh, students of every educational, uh, level. And I think that's something that really deserves a deep dive in by the board, um, as a discussion. But, um, I do have some questions which we can get to at some point.
Ms. Stowe.
Thanks. I actually think we're all pretty much marching in the same direction, which is refreshing because when I heard that we've done four to five reviews in 20 plus years and it seems that we never really moved the ball forward. That is, I can understand why parents are cautiously optimistic, but I think that they should feel really good because for the first time, we clearly have a superintendent that is pushing this. We have a new leader coming in on July 1 and you clearly have a board that's committed. So, um, look, we even have, uh, Carol Sutton here who retired. And so she doesn't even need to be here anymore and she's sitting here in the audience listening. So, um, in the summer. So I think that we are, you know, moving forward and I think we all agree that we need to work on this over the summer. 28 seems like a lot, but I don't know because I haven't looked at other schools and it sounds like you, if I read the 167 page report, I'll learn a lot more about the comps. But if I could just go quickly, are we allowed to start asking specific questions? Are we still going to talk on process?
No, you can ask questions.
Okay. All right. So, and again, this might come to, um, it's probably on the 167 page report, but, um, one of the things that strikes me, and it's probably because I lead the budget committee, and so I have to admit I'm focused a lot on our out of district tuition cost is that that does seem unwieldy at times, but I don't know how it compares to others. So I think we're, you know, we are, as you point out in the report, um, special education represents, we have 12.9% or so of our population. I believe that is pretty comparable to other districts, but please tell me if I'm wrong about that. Of that, how do you usually, what of that percentage, I guess, would you expect to be able to be handled, if you will, in, within a district? And how much should you expect to go out of district?
That's a tricky question to respond to because we've, I think, seen a variety of, of different reasons for why students wind up out of district. I think one thing that struck us that you'll see in the report is the, the past disconnects between your placements and the patterns of why they were made. Without that data, it's hard to make comparisons around what your district's out of district population, why that occurred relative to others. And that will be really critical, shoring that up and, and, and hearing Dr. Jones and knowing that the district's already started on that process is crucial to answer that question, but it's hard to answer. Because sometimes there are patterns within a district that you have a high number of students that may perhaps have behavioral health concerns that for whatever reason, any other of possibilities for whatever reason are going out and that can change your out of district number.
Dr. Francis, I think I saw your hand up. So if you want to unmute, you can go ahead. You've got to unmute though. Welcome to the Zoom world.
I know, sorry. This is sort of a, I think a mix of a big picture and an in the weeds question, but I think it ties a little bit into what Peter Scher was saying about sort of different models. And I know, um, one of the things we have talked about in the past was do you try and group students sometimes based on a particular issue they need to work on, such as a dyslexia issue, then do you have a specific curriculum for that? Versus do you try and keep everything sort of broader and more mixed? And it, and that comes into a question that I had when I was listening to the presentation and, and doing the reading about sort of labeling that we don't label, but then we may not sort of address their particular needs. And then academic lab, on the one hand, there was sort of a comment about how the academic lab should be sort of a supplement to what the curriculum is going on in the classroom. But then there was also the issue of the academic lab should be addressing things that are not in the standard curriculum, such as phonics. And, and so I, I wasn't clear exactly how sort of you were suggesting the model should be, or if you were simply saying that you think there's a problem and we need to address it. But I kind of felt like I was left with an uncertainty in terms of where you were, you were leading us with that. And I don't know if that comes back to the model question or sort of how those things are resolved.
I can, I can start and Jennifer Miller, you can continue. I, I think that, you know, the first part of your question, uh, specific to students with high needs, often in low incidence disability categories. We know that in, in many cases, there are specific learning strategies that are extremely well suited for specific learning, uh, area of deficiency or disability category autism, for example. Um, and so I'm not suggesting you have a, an autism program in name, but you need to have the autism expertise to support students who may have, uh, characteristics of, of, of that category. And so I, I would, I would say that's one item. And the other item you mentioned is the academic lab item, which is it, it needs to be in connection to the courses, that the collaboration between the teachers needs to occur. It needs to be a proactive approach and not a reactive approach, which I think is something that within the larger report, we provide greater articulation around. Jennifer, what, what else would you add to that?
I would say it's an extension of the academic lab piece. It, from our perspective, the supports, the individualized supports that students with IPs require that, that specially designed instruction is in order to help them access the general education, the core curriculum, at their grade level content curriculum. So, um, where we were seeing the challenges with the academic lab is that it wasn't in a proactive way, um, that with the goal being, how are we helping support the student in that history class, whatever class it is, um, to make sure that he or she can come out of that class, work on specific skills, it with the help of a special educator in order to be able to get back to hearing the content, being with their peers, but not in a way that they're going to get behind in the, in the, in the pace of the course. It's that, um, tailored instruction for them to be able to gain that access.
Other discussion? Karen. Christina, go ahead.
Um, I agree with most, literally all the comments have been made about process, but one question about the process was the role of PCG. I don't, you know, we, we, we approved them to go ahead with this meant a long time ago. So I wanted to kind of say, will they be guiding us? Are they participating or it's purely on us to do? I just, that's a question. Which I think Peter would like to answer.
No, I just wanted to add, I, 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 you know, I used to hire not PCGs, but Bains and McKinsey and what have you. And, you know, there's always the assessment part. And then they always would like the implementation work that comes, right? In the public setting, there, you know, I've noticed we've always hired people for the assessment and then there's this cultural bias. Maybe it's no money. I don't know why of organizations trying to do the implementation themselves. And in a lot of cases, 12 years I've been on the board and this has failed because of that. That's why I was talking about governance, Christina, is because, um, I want to have that discussion candidly. I'd like to go for whatever it is, 100, $200,000 to hire these guys to help staff and manage and guide maybe a program office because it's so huge. I think we have to read the report first, then the board needs to decide what's priority. But I'm really concerned. I mean, I know Dr. Jones by, by training as a special education person. So she's interested in it, which is really good. I know we're going to have this new director, but you know, if you read that report, it's reorganize, rename, go through every functional area, retrain. I mean, it's massive. What has to happen? I mean, they, they did a great job in consultant speak, but I'm flabbergasted. I mean, I've been here a long time. I've been pushing for this a long time. The, the director who's leaving was a source of a tremendous frustration for me. Cause I could never get the information out of them. It was like a silly little game. But now we're in a whole new space and I'm not even going to be here. So I, I mean, I'm going to help until November, but then I'm going to be gone. My, my last huron this would be get the resources behind this. So this could be properly managed as a program and that's when we get to process. I, I want to talk about that because I'm going to advocate strongly for that.
I was going to say, this was something that we as a steering committee had as a discussion was what kind of appetite the board might have to, uh, consider continuing on with PCG to help with the implementation. With more action planning and the implementation of this. Um, so that was something that, uh, we as a steering committee had discussed.
You, you want to know what we could do with that $9 million that we're going to get? Spend a big hunk of it getting this done.
Ms. Kowalski, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I just was going to add to the point that, uh, Karen, Karen raises, we, we had talked about it and I think this, this kind of echoes what I had mentioned earlier is that we now have this report and the board needs to take ownership of it and making sure that we follow through on this and we need the expertise of someone other than what our own collective expertise provide. I just, because we cannot fall flat with all of this information. All 637 pages of it, I think it was, and not. Oh, thank goodness. I was like, I multiply it. It is, it's going to feel like that because it'll be that dense. But what I'm saying is that we, we as a board cannot fail this community and our special learners by not taking the appropriate action. And I haven't read the report yet, obviously, but we're going to need some help. So I would strongly advocate that we figure out a way to have some, some oversight of a PCG or a PCG by another name, or however we want to do it, come in and make sure that we get this done.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm with you and I hope Mr. O'Keefe is paying attention and is already looking at the budget to, uh, to see where there's an opportunity for that. Mr. Kelly.
Well, I don't want to distinguish myself as anybody different from, uh, members of the board here. But I got out at sometimes when I hear things and I hear reasons why we're not going to get anything done. Uh, I'm an action person. I've worked on one project so far, uh, with our board. I was told so many times right at the beginning, right where we were before, five years of delaying. And we got to push this, uh, this thing forward. Most of the board, if not all of the board right now agrees that this thing has to be done. We have a new board coming in after the elections. I have no reason to believe that that new board would not also be as enthusiastic about getting this thing done as possible. We have a superintendent who wants to get this thing done. We have a community that wants to get this thing done. It's an issue of just us wanting to get this thing done and getting it done. My question to PCG is how in the past and other groups, because I've heard earlier tonight that we've done this multiple times before where we had reviews. Uh, we got to this point, we identified what was wrong and nothing happened. Tell me from your experience, uh, when you do a consultancy work for a district, what are the characteristics of that district that just take the advice and don't do anything with it versus what you think we should do in order to get this thing done?
Dr. Miller, how do you answer that? And I'll add on if.
Yep. Yep. I think one of the big obstacles that districts face after they get a report like this is, um, the players change. The superintendent changes, the board members change. There's some dynamic that, um, is of, um, I'll go so far as to say is an excuse as, as a reason why this falls off the radar. Something else comes up and this becomes old news. The districts that we see that actually make significant progress with recommendations have several things going for them or several orientations. One is that they have the unified support of a board, a superintendent, and then staff are ready to implement. They're very clear on the recommendation, uh, the, the success measures, I'll say aligned to the recommendation. So what I mean is they, um, there is a, and we have helped with this in some places, not all, um, that there is a development of an indicator of a standard to say, when we say this is the recommendation around parent engagement, this is how we're going to measure it over time. This is how we're going to know that we are successful. That is really hard to keep your eye on that ball on all of these recommendations. So what we see is consolidation at times of groupings of areas of, um, identification of both, uh, primarily quantitative data to say, this is how, based on our performance scores, based on additional survey data over time, this is how we're going to say that we're considering ourselves successful. Um, and I think transparency, we know you are an organization that focuses on engagement, um, far more than many other places, um, but keeping, um, keeping stock of where you are on those indicators, at least on, uh, uh, twice a year basis of looking at data and having some sort of public report that shows your progress made. I mean, you do something similar for your strategic plan already. Something similar to that, that is very clear that these are your priorities. This is how you're going to know you're successful. This is how we're going to tell the community about it on a regular basis.
Thank you. Well, we just, uh, agreed to have our superintendent work for another three years. So that issue of superintendent leaving is not an issue. We, I have personal reasons, which some know why this is important to me. I'm on this board for another couple of years. Uh, we have some new members coming in that I'm sure I'll be talking specifically to about getting this thing done. We have a couple of members who have been working very hard on this specific committee to make sure things get done. And they will be on this board for at least two more years, if not more than that. So there is no reason other than the fact that we failed the community that we're not going to get this thing done. So, uh, it's up to us, uh, to stop talking about why we can't get this done and not get it done. It's time for us to roll up our sleeves and get it done.
All right. Other discussion. Okay. Uh, hearing none. Um, oh, Ms. Hirsch, never.
Sorry. I didn't actually get to ask any questions. I've just been responding as a steering committee member. Sorry. I think it's pretty clear from our report, the report, uh, like I said, we haven't gotten the full report, but from the executive summary, that a lot of our immediate focus can and should be on improving communication, support and procedural documents and guides for staff and parents, as well as some professional development and some of that stuff we can work on. I think over the summer, even without necessarily, uh, having public input, because I, I think this is something having been through countless of these reviews on, on the parent side and, and on the board side. having been through countless of these reviews on the parent side and on the board side, you know, I, I know that those are things that people have wanted to do. But I did want to ask a very specific question or two in the executive summary, and I hope we'll get more information when it comes to the full report about over, you noted something about over-identification. I, you know, I'm not sure if that's comparable to state and national numbers, if this is due to our identification procedures or external factors, or in what disability categories those students were identified. And I hope that's in the full report, but I also was wondering why we want to, you know, if, instead of knowing which groups are overrepresented, I'd like to find out which schools and groups are underrepresented, and I want to make sure, is that also in the full report?
We did not provide school-level analysis. This was district-level. So that, I think that, that's to one of your questions. I, I will say overall, the identification practices piece, we, we provide detail in the report about what's called a risk ratio, which means it's, it's the likelihood that a student will be found to, to have a disability or in certain disability categories. This is a standard now, after federal regulations change, that each state is calculating their data according to risk ratios. We did not replicate the way Connecticut does it. However, this is very similar, and this is meant to provide a formative way or a way for you to start to measure over time some of those likelihoods. And it, it gives you an opportunity to look at data in a way that's very similar to how the state will look at it, to preempt any potential issues down the line in terms of citations or anything like that. So there is a lot of detail when it comes to specifically by race category and disability type, as well as settings, the where, where students are served, that will provide a lot more detail.
Thank you. I'll hopefully look for that in, in the full report. And I did want to ask, you know, this executive summary focuses a lot on our instructional models. And I know one of the things that parents and specifically our educators have reported was a discussion on behavioral supports and prevention and training for students who are in the, in our traditional classrooms. And I wanted to, hoping that's, as I said, that's something that's been raised here for years, and I want to say, I hope that's part and parcel of some of the recommendations that will be more detailed in the full report.
You know, I'll say in part, as, as we've said, we've talked to hundreds of people, and it's, it's always fascinating to us what rises to the level of, of conversation in many, many, many groups. I can't say that behavior was something, it certainly comes up in, in other districts in that regard. It was not something that rose to the level, which is why you don't see a particular recommendation in that area. So it, it, there certainly will be some mention of it, but it's, it's not as detailed. And that was how we follow the data, and we follow what folks are telling us and sharing, and questions that we ask about it, that sometimes doesn't yield it being a significant area of focus.
Thank you. And I guess, you know, the, the last question is, is once we get to look at the, the full report, I, I know I'll, I'll have certainly, obviously, a lot of more detailed and in-depth discussions and questions here, and I'm just hoping that once we get that, we'll also have an opportunity to, to hear back from you, to, to go over some of those, not just when we have public comment. So Dr. Jones, will we be able to invite them back to help address questions once, once the full report's available?
Yes, and just as a reminder, the full report, when we finish this meeting tonight, we'll go onboard docs right away. And we did build in some hours, but I obviously, from what the board is saying tonight, we need to build in many, 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 many more hours. So, thank you for that.
And I just want GPS to confirm one last thing. I know that they received hundreds of emails from staff and parents and other online and things, and I want to make sure that, that you address the fact that that, those things are included as part of the, the discussion topic, because I know it wasn't mentioned in your executive summary, but you did get a lot of that information as well, correct? And it's helped guide some of your discussions here?
Agreed, and we quantified in the report as well in terms of the number of, of emails, but we did, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Sher?
Well, I, I wanted to go on to the path forward and getting specific, the
Just one quick question in terms of the report to the board, will we be getting hard copies? We were just wondering, or perhaps?
I can have Ms. Valentine follow up. For those of you who would like a hard copy, we're happy to print that for you.
Thank you.
Count me in. I, I think just get one to everybody, unless somebody doesn't want the paper. The, the thing I was going to say, Peter, is here's, I'd like to suggest a path forward. Path forward is, first of all, we all got to get the report and read the report. I think we need a meeting next week where we can get public comment. We have to take that in while it's fresh and while the report is here. Why? She can watch, but
I'm going to tell you I'm not available next week, and I will talk to Dr. Jones, but we're looking at the week of July 5.
Whenever, okay. I, I think it has to be done with urgency. I realize in some quarters, urgency is apparently a bad cultural term now, but I think this needs to be done with urgency. We need to hear from the public before everybody disappears for the summer. The second thing is, I think the board needs to authorize a change order to the existing contract. The problem is, from a contracting perspective, it has to be within the scope of what the original was, because otherwise we're going to run afoul of procurement roles. But I'd be ready to make an authorization of some number to provide further support from a PCG on their recommendations, specific to the recommendations, because the recommendations are in the current scope. And by them being in the current scope, they were probably planning one more meeting to discuss this, and I think we should process a change order to their existing contract of some number of hours, whatever that is. I forget what you guys charge, whether you fix bid or we can do T and M, to provide support on understanding recommendations and planning recommendations, presuming that you and your team are available. That's another conversation.
We do, I think, have six, is it six or eight planning hours already?
That's not, that, my point, that's not enough.
No, no, we know that.
We need, we need a whole bunch probably to get us through September. And then I would think past September, then we can see if we're going to staff a program office and have implementation, and that thing can be let in RFP. My guess is the only people who will wind up bidding on it would be PCG, but we'll, we'll see. I, I'd like to do this, and I'd like to do this with leftover operating funds, which we now are going to be available in this fiscal year, and that would have to be contracted within, what's today, 23, the next seven days? So I would want to get that done, and I would suggest that as a path forward. Then I'd also like to, once we get that, that meeting done, schedule a meeting, whether it be in July or whatever, to start discussing the prioritization of recommendations and the direction from the board. So those three things.
So in terms of the additional hours, I think Dr. Jones is already formulating a strategy, and you know, it's, it's actually Wednesday, so if we needed to, we could probably schedule a quick meeting on Friday to authorize an additional outlay if necessary. So if you could, this Friday, if needed, we can move that fast, because I think you'd want to vote at the board before you sign off on anything.
Do it as a change order.
Yeah, exactly, because you have an existing contract, so you're basically just taking advantage of that.
But is there a way to do it by motion tonight? With, I don't know, some way to delegate the authority to you as the board, can we, I don't know, is there a way to do it up to a certain, I'm, I'm just asking?
Get the number, get the number from Matt, and then we can just have a 15-minute phone call and get it done.
It's probably better to just handle that on Friday, once they've worked with, with PCG a little bit, and Sean needs to do what Sean needs to do, so we can, we can do that on Friday. And then the, you know, the next is, obviously, everybody's got to have time to digest the report. We will look, and I'll talk to Dr. Jones and Ms. Stowe about scheduling, but we would want the, the new interim director in place, and probably looking at the week of July 5. That would give everybody a little time to digest, formulate their questions. We would start, obviously, with a public hearing, just taking comments on the special education study. And then we can determine where to go from there, but I think, yes, additional action planning time is going to be needed. And I think that's probably where we are. I don't know, Dr. Francis, did you have anything? Just want to make sure we, we capture everybody. All right. I want to
What's going to be the process here with board member questions on the report?
So if you have questions before we meet next, send them through the superintendent, and she can send them on to PCG so that they can address them prior to the meeting. Obviously, if there's a number of them, it's always great to get that in writing, so it can be shared and posted with the community, or at least answered at, at the next meeting with them. You know, to the extent the community still has questions, you know, you avail yourselves of continuing to send them on to us. We will send them on to Dr. Jones, and Dr. Jones will send them on to PCG. It's, it's work to date, and we'll just keep doing that. And then we'll take the public comment at the meeting. And then from that point, we will go forward. You know, we will continue to move in a positive direction with the idea of developing a formalized action plan. And that is, that is the goal here. So a real plan to, to actually carry these things out in a timely fashion. So with that, Mr. Kelly, did you have a motion you wanted to make?
Yes, but before that, I just want to say happy summer to everybody. Now that we've started the summer and things are great, and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to second that. I will take a quick, quick vote. Dr. Francis, yes, that's the one. Ms. Kowalski?
Yes.
Ms. Towney?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Stowe?
Yes.
Mr. Sher? Yes, Ms. Hirsch?
Yes, I have a lot of reading to do.
And Bernstein's, yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.